Welcome to the Hampden Town Council Meeting for April 4th, 2016. Could you please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item up is public comments at this time. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your chance. Is there anybody for public comments? Seeing none. Next item is policy agenda. First item is news presentations and awards for recognition of the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team. And at this time, I would like to have the team meet me up here at the podium, please. So once again, we did this last year, and it's really nice to have everybody back. This letter of proclamation, whereas the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team demonstrates teamwork, cooperation, positive attitudes that are an inspiration to all. And the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team offers youth with and without intellectual disabilities the opportunity to play together as athletes while forming friendships, fostering respect. And the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team has been a leader and a role model for other schools who are now beginning unified programs of their own. And the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team has captured the title of 2016 Unified Basketball State Champs. Now I, David Ryder, Mayor of the Town of Hampden, Maine, do hereby proclaim that the Hampden Academy Unified Basketball Team are the champions of our state and of our town and of our hearts. And thank you all very much. Well, while you're in here, Mr. Hampden Academy, I handle one, he should probably get it, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to say a few words into the microphone?
Well, just one more thing. Last year, you guys got the gold ball for basketball, and we gave you a gold ball of chocolates, and we're going to do the same thing. You deserve it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This means so much to us, even towards my family and friends. Not only you've been to my games, but you've really touched our hearts to begin last year, too. To be honest with you, I have always liked basketball, played basketball well with strength and integrity, and I'm really glad that you came to watch, and I'm really glad to have my friends and coaches support us, too. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for honoring us. We really appreciate it. Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good. The next item up on the public hearings, Erickson's Hardware, application for a new vicular's license. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the license for Erickson Hardware.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item up is Item B, James Butler, Dangerous Building. Map 21, Lot 8, continuation from March 21st, 2016. And at this time, I'd have the code enforcement for the Town of Hampden come up and present their case.
Per the request of the council, I'm going to pass out the updated stuff. I believe you guys got stuff through last week, but this is up to today with our inspection today. So.
Give them a chance to kind of look it over. You're good if I continue. Jason Lundstrom, Fire Inspector, Town of Hampden. We visited the site today to get a, you know, per the council, to get some sort of a ruling as to where the property stood. It appears as though there's been some debris that's been cleaned up. We took some pretty good notes and indicated them there, so I'll give you a second to read them. But there's been some debris cleaned up. It appears as though some of the concrete foundation materials have been removed from underneath the house. It looks as though the house has been jacked up with some blocking placed underneath it. You know, the problems that existed with the building are still there, obviously. There's some sagging in the roof. You know, you'll see that indicated in the notes there. The front porch is still sagging in. So, you know, what we observed when we were out there today was some orange, like a four-foot tall snow fence around the north side of the property. When we were there, it didn't extend all the way around the property, but it looked as though it may at some period of time. But like I said, at this point, you know, at the end of the day, it's still, it still meets the Dangerous Building statute. It's still a dangerous building any way you try to look at it. So I guess, from our standpoint, there's not a lot that we can add further. I felt like, you know, if I stand up here today and tell you this is where we're at with the building as of today, it's really, short of digging some foundation materials out from underneath it and clearing some overgrowth from around the property with a four-foot snow fence, the building is still as it is. Like I said, there is some blocking underneath there, but we have no idea how to gauge how much that improved the building. That's where we're at at this point. If you folks have any questions for us.
May I ask a couple of questions of the...
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Lundstrom or Mr. Block, the statute for dangerous buildings, and I'll read from it for your benefit as well as for the council's benefit and for Mr. Butler's benefit, it provides that, I'll read it all instead of skipping over, "Whenever the municipal officers in a case of a municipality or the county commissioners in a case of an unorganized or deorganized area in their county find that a building or structure or any portion thereof, or any wharf, pier, pilings, or any portion thereof that is or was located on or extending from land within the boundaries of the municipality, as measured from the low watermark, is structurally unsafe, unstable, unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is unsuitable or improper for the use or occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment, or is otherwise dangerous to life or property, they may after notice and hearing on the matter adjudge the same to be a nuisance or dangerous, and may make a record, make and record, an order prescribing what disposal must be made of the building or structure." So the threshold question this evening is whether, in short, based upon what you have seen and the evidence that you have presented to the council, whether your opinion is that it is structurally, that the Butler property, that is, is structurally unsafe or unstable or constitutes a fire hazard, or is unsuitable or improper for the use or occupancy to which it is put, or otherwise is a safety, is a hazard to health or safety.
And we, as a code enforcement team, I kind of speak for both of us here, think that it meets every single one of the criteria that you've read. Where we're at today, just so you know, we've reached out to Mr. Butler, we've explained that, you know, before we start jacking the house up and making improvements underneath, you know, the cleaning up the debris, things like that around the property, no problem. Once we start jacking the foundation up and making moves on a structurally unsafe building, we don't know what's going to happen with the building. Therefore, we required, and we've explained this out, that before the jacking of the property happens, we need to have a building permit on file. With that building permit, also comes construction documents. Those construction documents are the documents from an engineer, structural engineer, that verify that, hey, we're going to do this to the building, and I'm going to sign off as an engineer that this is the plan to make this building safe. At this point, there's absolutely no way that it's safe and meets every one of those criteria.
This may be speculation, but could you comment as to the relative safety or stability of that building today as compared to a week ago?
You can. In comparing the pictures from before to now, I was comparing them today on my computer, and, you know, as a layperson, it appears to me that more of that structure has started to collapse down in the center, and the porch looks like it's moved more. Again, I didn't have pictures from the same angle, but that would be my...
Thank you.
One thing I would add is that there has been an effort over the past, you know, since we had the last hearing, there has been an effort in cleaning the debris up around the property. The chimney has been removed, which is indicated in the notes. The top of where the chimney sat on the roof has been flashed, so no water can get in. You know, but at the end of the day, we're here because of the structural instability. That's why we're here. And at this point, like I said, we, there's no, there's no plan, there's no definitive way that this building is going to be safe, and that's what we're here for.
Mr. Butler, would you like to speak, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Butler may have questions. Mr. Butler may have questions of our code officer and fire inspector.
Do you want to ask them questions now or address the council first?
I'd like to ask them a couple of questions.
Yep, sure.
You said it appears that I've jacked the building. What are you basing that on?
Based on the photographs that we took today. In the cribbing that was underneath the building, I feel, having seen that type of situation before, that there's no possible way that blocking could have been stacked and cribbed in that manner without jacking the house up.
Okay. Do you remember, I had a conversation with you about, I told you I was going to secure my property and put cribbin' under it. You told me that's okay, but you also indicated that you didn't, you didn't want the structure jacked. If it was, it indicated that you wanted a permit and that you wanted a structural engineer to okay it.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't jack the building. I did put cribbin' underneath it. I have done that. I just want to give you an update where I'm at. I did, he's very accurate on a few things. I took the chimney down, and that's visible. I also put a six-foot fence around the property. That was completed today. When he was out earlier today, it's not a snow fence. The fence that I put up is OSHA-approved. It's a fence that actually is, comes in four-foot widths. The code enforcement officer, or actually the, I'm sorry, I can't...
Fire inspector.
Fire inspector. He wanted a six-foot fence. I checked with the code office to find out if I needed a permit to put a six-foot fence up. He said, no, six-foot or under, I don't need it. I put a six-foot fence up. The OSHA-approved fencing for job size to secure, securing the property, only comes in four-foot. So what I did was I put, I put it up six-foot. I overlapped it, so there's eight feet of fencing. It's around the complete property. It's not just around the house. It's also around the debris. The debris that he's talking about is the furnace, stuff in the basement. A neighbor next door had thought, you know, no one was there, so they brought over an old couch and some stuff and piled it out back. I cleaned all that up. I also talked to the code enforcement officer and asked him if I needed, if I needed a permit to clean up stuff. He said, no, you can clean up, he said, but no repairs. I said, I'm not repairing anything, but I am securing my property. I'm kind of in a, kind of in an odd situation. On one hand, I'm being asked, what have I done to secure the property? And on the other hand, I can't do anything without a permit. I can tell you that this, what's taken place, this is what I've done. I have a fence around the property that's six feet high. It has a post every seven to eight feet. It also has no trespassing signs against, on the fence across the front. There's three no trespassing signs. The chimney's down. I also went in and took out all the debris and concrete from underneath the foundation. The house is sitting on, the foundation on two ends, and the back is on its original piers. It's fine. The one wall from the street, unfortunately, that everybody can drive by and sit comfortably in their car and see that wall, that's the one that you see is on the front. I have many pictures of the house. If you look at the rest of the house, it's square, it's straight, but unfortunately for me, the property owner, the one wall you can see easily by driving by is that front wall. The porch is tipped in because that has its own foundation. It's got piers out front. Those are fine. The, what I've done to secure my property, and I'm limited because I need a permit first, is I've gone in under the building, taken out the concrete and all the debris. I dug down below the foundation, hand shoveled, put 12 inches of crushed stone in, and I cribbed it up with a cribbin', eight-by-10 cribbin', all the way up, and I secured it. And it's, to be honest with you, it's ready to go. I mean, if I had that permit from him, I could have it jacked up in probably an hour. It's ready to go right now. It is definitely secured. And it's, you know, the fence is secure. I've also taken an application for a permit. The missing link that I have is the, I'd have a permit tomorrow when the town office is open, that applying for a permit and spending the money for a permit's not the problem. The problem is, the fire inspector wants a structural engineer to jack up that wall of the house. That's, that's the thing right there. So if that's got to be done, then that's got to be done. I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to that. So it's a perfect, it's a perfectly good house. It's just that mother of nature, the frost has pushed that wall in. There's no rebauing the foundation. It's a hand-poured foundation from back in the 20s, I'd say, maybe the 30s, something like that. So, but I have secured the structure. Definitely secure, and I am going to move forward with a permit. As soon as I get a permit, then I'll jack it right up. It's, and I have pictures of the, I have a few pictures if you'd like to see it, if that would be helpful to give you an idea. Just as these pictures are passed down, if Terry at the end, if you can make sure they get back here so we get a copy in the official record. I also have digital photos that I can send. I just, I have a black and white printer at my office, so I just printed those out.
Does anybody have any questions? Counsel Royce?
So when was it communicated to you that you needed a structural engineer? I guess when was that communicated, that process?
Well, actually, actually, he indicated that to me back in, sometime in the fall. I'm going to say, yeah, I'd say October. Sometime in October, he approached me and asked me what I was going to do with it. And at the time, I said, well, I'm really nothing. It's, you know, winter's coming on and the elements and stuff. And he said, well, okay, you know, can, and that's when he asked to put up a fence and take down the chimney. And then I indicated, like I said at the last meeting, I said, I didn't really want to spend the money. I'm assuming, and I had assumed that a fence was going to be fairly expensive. So I indicated to him at the time that I said, I'd rather apply the money, instead of the cost of a fence, I'd rather apply the money into jacking up the building, the expense of the building. And at that time, he indicated to me that, that's fine, you can get a permit and jack it up, put a foundation on it. The only thing I'm going to need is, you know, a structural engineer on jacking up the building, which, and I have, by the way, talking, I have spoken to two people that jack up buildings, and they've, this is kind of the first new thing. They've never heard of a structural engineer to jack up a house. I mean, and honestly, it's that one front wall. That's, that's the key. I mean, and as soon as I'm issued a permit, that will be jacked right up. And it's definitely stable. It's got cribbin' under all the beams, and it's in, it's inside the right amount, so a trench can be dug, and a footer can be put in, and a wall can go in. And there again, whatever the code is, if it's a 10-inch wall with rebau, you know, obviously, I don't want to redo it, so.
I got a quick question for either Jason or Miles. The engineering, if, do I understand that right, doesn't really have anything to do with the jacking? Isn't it the support that you're going to put underneath the building? Not necessarily the jacking of the building, more the support to hold the building?
The school of thought in our conversation about a structural engineer was that the building code that we're under uses empirical construction. We start from the foundation, and we work our way up to the roof, framing the whole nine yards. The foundation, and we may agree to disagree, the front wall, whether it's there, whether it's not there, the foundation is dilapidated. It has now affected the entire structure. That's what I, that's the take-home message, is that it's not just the foundation. In the pictures, you can see the windows are racked, the roof line is sagging. We're not talking about a foundation wall here only. That is, that is a big portion of the problem, but that's where it starts, and everything from the foundation up has been affected or could possibly been affected. That was the talk about the structural engineer. The structural engineer was not coming in to jack up the house. The structural engineer was to advise on how to stabilize the structure. That's where we're at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up on that, to make sure I understand the process. So Mr. Butler is trying to get a permit to do this. You want the opinion of a structural engineer about how to do this, I think, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
So you wouldn't sign off as the town on his permit without the input of a structural engineer?
The initiation...
And if that's true, then the permit wouldn't be valid.
Sure. The initiation of a, the building permit process, the initiation of a permit application brings in the permit into the code office with a plan. It brings us a plan of what Mr. Butler would like to do, and it also, in having a building permit, it protects the town in that it also requires construction documents. And those construction documents are the key. It's the engineer's report saying, okay, he's got a building permit, he wants to replace the foundation. The structural engineer has basically gone from the top to the bottom. It's a two-family, it's a two-family house. So you've got the potential of two families living in there. The structural engineer is going to evaluate that property from the ground up to make sure that it's safe and happy, because at this point, it's not.
Yeah, I have a question for our attorney. Ed, if Mr. Butler were to proceed on jacking up the building or whatever onsite without the permitting process I'm hearing described tonight, and he or someone in his employ suffered an injury in that process, does the town have liability for that?
No. The town has made it clear to Mr. Butler that he needs these permits. What we have not yet done is issued a stop-work order, which could plainly be done, and candidly, we had a conversation during the week last week where we did not want to preclude Mr. Butler the opportunity to fix a problem. So before he came back to the council, as we had previously agreed he would on the Fourth of April, but I would strongly encourage that we would issue a stop-work order until a permit has been issued for this project. But even if we did not, I don't think that that would rise to the level of negligence in terms of the town's permitting authority, although it would be a much stronger case for us if we had issued the stop-work order and he ignored that. You know, we'd have to take further steps, but we would, we would be duty-bound, I think, this week to not allow further work without the permits in place.
Counsel McAvoy?
Yes, for CEOs. The permit that is going to be required to work on this building now is different than a permit that is maybe issued or, you know, applied for to bring it up to code. Are we talking about two different things here?
So we're talking about, excuse me, we're talking about the International Residential Code, and I can read it to you right here. Any owner or authorized agent who intends to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish, or change the occupancy of a building shall get a permit from the code or the building official. And if you keep going into that, it talks about construction documents which are needed, and then talks about what those supplemental documents have to be done by a registered design professional. But it can be waived in the terms of, if it's a house that we know how to go through the code book and do, we could waive the registered design professional part of it. But this falls under a, let's see, special condition. Where special conditions exist, the building official is authorized to require additional construction documents to be prepared by a registered design professional. We're at that point where I think we all can agree that this is a special circumstance, and that, you know, we don't have the expertise, you know, of us are engineers to say what's structurally safe for this thing. This is a repair permit. It looks remarkably similar to our new construction permit, because we don't know what is going to be needed for, you know, the repair of this structure. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the effort that you started to put in on this. My concern comes down into being timeframe. Since this whole thing was instituted last fall, and we're now into April, and you're looking at a permit where the structural engineers report, obviously, to get that permit, what is your expectation on when this is going to take place?
As far as getting the permit or...
Yes.
The structural engineer? I'd say within the next 30 days. And so, I don't know, he said he needs 30 days to, if I turn in an application for a permit, this gentleman here, Miles, he said that he's, that he can take up to 30 days to issue it. So I, the town's got to have 30 days. I'm saying I need, the only thing that I'm held up for is I, is the structural engineer. If in fact I have to have a structural engineer to jack up a building, then I'm waiting for that. So I'm relying on someone else as far as me filling out the application and writing a check for a permit.
Have you talked to a structural engineer yet?
Yes, I have.
You have?
Yep. I, I mean, I would say it might take a couple of weeks to get that, and that's the only, I'd turn in the application right now, but he's already indicated that he needs, he said along with the application, the fire inspector said that he needs a structural engineer. And I'll be honest with you, this is, you know, it isn't, it's not standard stuff. I mean, it's a little different.
Any other questions?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yep.
Relative to that.
Right.
When I spoke to Mr. Butler, he had recommended, you know, he said that this seems like it might be outside of the norm, like we're making, jump through hoops that may not, what we're getting at here is, he had mentioned, I talked to a couple contractors, that, you know, they jack up houses, and this is what they do, and it's no problem. I stressed to Mr. Butler that in the state of Maine, there's no licensing process for a contractor. There's just, it doesn't exist. So like the building code required, we're looking for someone who has some structural, some background to be able to sign off on this project and verify that it was safe. So I just, if that was the case, and that there was someone else besides a structural engineer, it's brought up a lot of times, if there was someone else besides a structural engineer that was qualified to sign off the fact that this building is structurally safe, so be it. We're looking for someone who is professionally qualified to give us a ruling as a town that this building is safe.
Thank you. Counsel...
Yeah, I guess, I guess I've got a, I'm willing to probably go along with this, but I'd like to have a little more definitive part on yours as to when this is going to take place with some exact, if you've talked to a structural engineer, what has he told you about putting the plans together, when you're going to, when you're going to get them, and when you can get your permit? In other words, I, we've been dragged on this thing...
Thirty, within...
For a long period of time, which you've been doing things, but I haven't had anything concrete from you to say that I'll have the report in their hands... concrete from you to say that I'll have the report in their hand in two weeks, at which time I can get a permit and we'll proceed from there.
Okay. Well, first of all, the dragging on part, this is the first time I've been here to represent myself. The last time I asked for an extension, that, I hadn't been here before. When I spoke with this gentleman here back in October, and him and I, our conversation ended, he said that I would no longer be hearing from him, and I said, that's fine. The winter months came along, and then there was a lot of activity that you did here as a council, in committee and stuff, that I learned about just two weeks ago. That's why I asked for extensions. So there's not been any, you know, there's not been any sidestepping on me as far as, you haven't faced me down here. This is really the first time. I can, I can assure you, within 30 days, I'll have an application. If I could have one, if I had a structural engineer, if I could meet the level of expectation that he's asking for with a structural engineer, tomorrow, I'd have you an application tomorrow. In fact, I can have an application minus a structural engineer. That's the, that's the thing. But I got, obviously, he wants that. I'm relying on somebody else. I'm assuming within a couple of weeks. If I said 30 days, it should be easy.
You're asking us to assume again? And, and that's?
Thirty days.
And that's a problem. I, I'm, I'm looking for when this person's going to step forward and say, I will have this in your hands and you will bring it down and get the permit.
I'll have it to you within 30 days.
Just to clear something up on the permitting process, it was mentioned that we needed 30 days to process it. From the time the permit application hits the code enforcement office, as long as it's complete with the engineer's report, it's 14 days to process the permit, just so that we're talking about the same timeline here when we make a decision.
Mr. Bell?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that, that 30 days is not going to be part of his, that 30 days is not part of his 14. I'm, I'm hoping that he's got enough knowledge and, and the, you know, the weather's, weather's good now. If he has the application, he can turn it around as soon as possible, but I'm saying 30 days.
I'm thinking if you tell us you're going to have a completed permit with all the engineering stuff that he needs in 30 days, and if it takes him 14, so be it, but if you're telling us you're going to have your end done, completed.
Yeah, within, right.
Within 30 days, that doesn't count his time.
Right. That's right.
Any other questions?
I would, I would just point out that it also doesn't take into account the time it would take to actually do the work once the permit is issued, so. I did also have a, just a, I think, a clarification question following on Counselor McAvoy's question on, in terms of the permitting. Is the end result of the repair permit simply to get the structure to where it is safe or is it to get the structure to where a certificate of occupancy can be issued? Or does that depend on what permit is applied for?
The, the end of all our permitting process is either a certificate of compliance or certificate, certificate of occupancy, so it will have to be, that would be the endpoint of any permits that we issue.
Can, I, I missed a little piece. Can you repeat that? The occu, what was the other part? Occupancy and what's the other piece you said?
Or a certificate of compliance.
Okay.
They're, they're one of the, say, pretty major interchangeable, so.
Any further questions? Counsel McPike, or?
Is there any reason that we would have to expect that it would take 14 days to issue that permit once he has the entire package together? That's just an up to number, right?
It's up to that amount, and it's all, it, it will depend on volume of, of permits coming in at that period of time. But like I say, we have been diligent in working these permits out and have blown away that expectation on numerous occasions, most of the time. So I would say, it's fair to say that we could process it quicker than 14 days, as long as the permit was complete and it was submitted.
Mr. Butler, do you have everything you need as far as a checklist or anything from these folks to make sure that the permit is, the package is absolutely complete? I believe so, but the, the code guy is pretty helpful. When I call, he calls me back, and if I have any questions, I'm sure he'll get to me. He gave me a packet and you gave me a, and I think it was an instruction booklet, and I have that in, I mean, really, that's not a big deal to fill out, but the time is going to be that second party on the, on the engineer, structural engineer, just to satisfy that since the, the structure's been altered, he just want, my understanding, he, he wants to make sure that in, in its, the fact that it's been altered, once it's put back, it's going to be okay. Am I right? So that's it. It's not, I don't think it's really anything to do with a jacking or a foundation. I mean, that's straightforward. It's just that the struc, the structure's been compromised. If the structure's put back to where it was, is it okay? That's, that's what I understand, so. But a structural engineer, I mean, it's.
And the engineer's report, like I said, from top to bottom, they, they, they're going to obviously coach him through putting a foundation under the house, but we're looking for, if you do this, the engineer's report's not simply going to be, we're going to put the, you know, we're going to just put a foundation underneath there. I'm sure that it will contain the information that says, this is our comprehensive plan on how to get this house back up where it needs to be, from the foundation to the framing to the roof to everything.
It may seem a little unusual to some of the guys that you have doing the work, but I think from our standpoint, when you're looking at a building, the, the foundation has been jeopardized, that's where the whole thing changes, because the foundation has already collapsed. A lot of times, we try to, or people try to get ahead of it before the foundation gets to that point. So I fully, I fully agree with these guys. They, you need a structural engineer to make sure that something doesn't come down on you guys when you start doing this work. So, okay.
Counsel Royce?
I, I, I want to get my head around this. So we need, there are two things we need to do here. One of them is to get permit and the structural, structural engineer to give his recommendations for firming it up. The other thing we need to do is get the building firmed up. So my question is, we're giving him 30 days for what? For just the direction from the structural engineer? Or are we giving him 30 days to also do the recommendations of the structural engineer? Because it, it doesn't, it doesn't get us anywhere if we.
Well, I, he needs, he needs up to 14 days, and the gentleman just asked me to your right, how much time I would need to get you the application with a structural engineer, and I said 30 days. So third, it's going to be less, but within 30 days, I'm going to be submitting an application with a structural engineer. Then he has up to 14 days to turn it around, and then I, once I get that permit, as your attorney pointed out, I can start the work.
Well, I'd like to establish timelines now. That's what I would like to do. In other words, because what I don't want to have is it just sit there once we have everything in and nothing gets done to it, and we're, we're talking about it in October.
I, I think the town, now, I want to step in right there. I think the town already has guidelines. When a permit is issued, isn't there, I mean, I don't, you know, isn't there timelines already?
There's 14 days for us to review the permit, but the timeline, I think.
No, no. No, yeah, I understand, I heard what he said.
Okay.
The timelines I'm talking about is when someone comes down and gets an application to repair a foundation, the town already has guidelines as far as, you know, the permit's good for so long. I mean, you don't put restrictions on, that's, you don't put restrictions on, and if someone comes into the town and wants to do a repair and they ask for a permit, when you give that permit, is, does it come with, it comes with some type of guidelines as far as the town already has timelines? I don't know, is it six months, a year, what? Isn't that, isn't that the case?
We're going to start it on a general permit for, within six months, but with a consent agreement out of this proceeding, you guys can set your own timelines.
Right. And I, and I think that's what we need to do here is, because I'm not willing to let that property sit there for another six months in its condition. So I think what we should do is establish, give them 30 days for quote-unquote, all the paperwork, everything we need to do, and then an additional, something we need to agree on, 30 days and additional 60 days to get the building in repair, so that we're not dealing with this. Because I, I just don't want to see us having the same conversation in October, and I got, and I, trust me, I feel like that's what we're going to be doing.
You do.
Because just seeing the track record, we've been talking about this.
Not we, not me, you, but anyway.
I, I'd like to.
Okay, Counsel McPike?
I, I'm going over the notes here, and I wasn't a council at the time, but I'm, but I'm reading over this stuff and I'm going back to, to November. And, and in November, you stated you had talked to a structural engineer.
Right.
But didn't give his name. You were, you were advised then by these people.
Right.
What you needed to do, but nothing was done.
Right.
So you, you come here and say, I'm, I'm really not sure what I was supposed to do because I wasn't in on these meetings.
No, no.
That we had, we didn't have to be in on any meetings to do that. They informed you of what was necessary.
Right. And he also informed me back in November, he said that he, he wouldn't, I wouldn't be talking to him anymore. He said that he was going to take it to the town manager and that you, you was going to be getting a hollering. And the first time I, you got a hollering was when I was in here last weekend. I mean, two weeks ago.
Counsel Marble?
I agree with Counsel Royce, we're going to have to work on a timeframe. Couple issues before we get to that point. One for Mr. Butler. What if the recommendations or guidance from the engineer as part of the permitting process looks like it's going to be much more than you had anticipated? I don't have any experience in, in buildings personally. Seems to me you do have some. And so I think you have a sense in your mind of the scale of work it would take to straighten out a foundation. What happens if the engineer says, hold the phone, you've got to do A, B, C, D, and F to even move forward?
That, that was the next thought in my mind when he mentioned about the timelines. I mean, if you say, look, we'll get a permit and then I got 30 days to put a foundation under it, then the structural engineer has a little different, you know, approach to it, and instead of 30 days, it's going to take, you know, extra time. So that, that's unknown. But as far as I'm concerned, I don't, I'm 95-plus percent that it's going to be pretty simple. I mean, it's straightforward.
I guess what I'm suggesting in the question is that we, we build in limited windows for decisions at each point, so that if he does conform with the app, with the permit and the structural engineering requisites on that, that after that's granted, there's X amount of time to either comply or say, I can't comply. That it's determined that way, so we're not stuck in limbo. And I also want to make sure that we don't miss the attorney's point about a stop-work order until this in fact does happen. So Mr. Butler isn't there crawling around in that building tomorrow morning without the necessary permitting.
Counsel McPike?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about us getting a stop-work order, simply for the fact that I wouldn't want Mr. Butler to go in and do a lot of work on this, to have a structural engineer 30 days from now come back and say, what you've done is no good and you've got to tear it all out again. I really would like to see everything seized up until he knows exactly the direction he's got to go with this. And I'm more than willing to say, let's give him the time to do this down the road, but I don't want him wasting time and monies, anything else on it, on the piece of property, unless, unless he has, knows exactly where he's going.
Counsel Coleman?
The, looks like the agenda is asking us to deem this or not deem this a dangerous building. What does, this is a question for, I don't know who. What does deeming it a dangerous building force tonight? What?
That's, that's what we're asked, that's what we're being asked to do.
I, I can probably address that. Excuse me. You're, you're proceeding tonight under a, a main statute. It's called the Dangerous Buildings Statute. And as I, I mentioned earlier, if based upon the materials that you have in front of you and the testimony that you've heard from the three witnesses this evening, you think that the structure that Mr. Butler owns at 691 Main Street or Main Road.
It's not 691 Main Road. That's my office.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's where your address is.
758.
758 Main Road, Main Road North in Hamden, is unsafe or unstable or is a danger to public health and safety, then you would find that it is, and we would ask you to base, what your decision is based on, and you might say, the, the lack of proper foundation, the, the bowing of, the front wall, the, the, the sagging of the roof suggests that this is an unsafe building. You have options at that point, which include the things that you've been discussing, and which are instruct Mr. Butler to obtain all of the necessary permits to secure this building, make it a safe structure, if you will, within a certain period of time, and to perform that work. Again, I think very importantly, within a certain period of time, because the statute that you're working under says that when that time passes, and let's say you arbitrarily set it at 30 days or 60 days after the code office issues him a permit, he has to have brought this building into compliance within that period. If he does not, then the statute says that you have the authority to declare the building a nuisance and to abate it at the town's expense and to place a lien on that property to recover your expenses. So the, the end game is that either Mr. Butler brings the building into compliance or the town will have to take action on its own after the period that you set.
Counsel Coleman?
So the, the answer tonight is, we're down the road from, from, right now, with this discussion, we're down the road from calling it a dangerous building. The, the last public hearing of the March 21st was a continuation for 30 days of deeming it a dangerous building. Is the next step to do that before we talk about the, what we've been talking about?
My understanding of the proceeding this evening was that the evidence was to be presented to the council and for the council to make a determination that as of tonight, this is a dangerous building or this is not a dangerous building. If you conclude that it is a dangerous building, then it's incumbent upon you to then further order either that the building be fixed or, or not.
Any other questions? Mr. Butler?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure. I, I have secured that building. The build, my property is secured. It's not a dangerous building at this point. Absolutely not. The debris's been moved out, it's been cribbed up, there's a fence around it, the chimney's down.
Before we make any decisions, is there any public comment? Seeing none? What's the pleasure of the council? Counsel McAvoy?
I make a motion that the town council deem the structure at 758 Main Road North a dangerous building pursuant to MRS 17, Section 2851, and to allow Mr. Butler 30 days to apply for the appropriate permit related to stabilizing the building such that it is no longer considered a dangerous building within 30, within 60 days of issuance of the permit.
I'll second that.
Well, we're going to have discussion now, so.
So your, your, your motion is 30 days to get the paperwork in place, 60 days to get it to a place of compliance?
Right, just to get it stabilized so that it is no longer considered a dangerous building. The rest of it will be up to, you know, code enforcement as far as getting it habitable and such.
90 days total.
Correct.
Mr. Bell?
Yeah, I've already done that, and I'd like to, he, he, his view today was from the other side of the street. He wasn't on the property. That, that's already been done.
But I think what he's saying is, you have 60 days compliant from the engineer's perspective on what you need to do. You're going to have 60 days to complete what the engineer says needs to be done, I think, is Counselor McAvoy's.
Okay, but the other gentleman, he, there's a little unknown there. I mean, like, he asked me, he said, that, that's all great and that makes sense, but if an engineer comes back and comes up with something that doesn't, you know, can't be done within that timeframe or there's something a little out of the norm, then that's all. It's pretty, pretty simple, but the complication is that structural engineer part of it.
Counsel McPike?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the motion, except that once the permit's done and, and 14 days has been issued with a structural engineer's report, I think, I think you said 60 days after that?
60 days to bring it up to a condition where it is no longer considered a dangerous building. Not necessarily habitable or anything like that. I think our only concern as a council is that it not be deemed a dangerous building.
Because the, the downside of that that I see is, we don't know now what the structural engineer is going to come back with, and I'm, I'm concerned that 60 days is a short time period for someone who has to, may have to do a lot of work inside it to make it a stable building that they want to do that. And that's my only concern, that 60 days is relatively short coming into the building season.
Right. Jason?
One, one thing to entertain, just because we're familiar with the construction documents that come into the town office and it may help in this type of an environment. Most of the time, a structural engineer is involved in a project, and we get them here of the time a structural engineer is involved in a project, and we get them here on commercial buildings on a regular basis, they will sign on to the project, issue a letter stamped as to how the project is going to go about. They will also conduct their own inspections. They're signing off on it, so a lot of them like to do their own inspections and sign off on it, because it's their project, they're taking the responsibility. So I would say that maybe there might be the ability to require a report from the structural engineer as to how, you see what I mean, how the project is coming along, and then most likely they will do a final inspection and sign off on the project. That's been our experience when we involve an engineer, is that when you have them sign on, they sign on pretty much for the project and take that personally. So just something to consider. They might give you your benchmarks.
Counsel McAvoy?
But you could make that a condition of the permit, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
A requirement of construction documents.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Bala?
Yeah, how many, can I just ask?
Yeah.
How many times have you required a structural engineer when someone comes in to repair a foundation in a residential home in Hamden?
I personally have not had one to the-
Has it, no, I didn't ask that. I asked, I didn't ask the extent.
Zero times, because it hasn't occurred.
Zero times. Counsel Marvel?
I have another question for the attorney. If we pass a motion declaring that it's an unsafe building, is that, in effect, a stop-work order, or does that require a separate motion?
It should re, excuse me, it's not necessarily for the council to direct a stop-work order be issued. The council's sentiment can be reflected in its comments, and it would be for the code officer to issue that. I would say with respect to the motion, it was perfectly worded, but we should have at least a statement as to what facts we're relying upon in reaching the conclusion that it's a dangerous building. I'm not trying to lead the council, but you've heard testimony about what you might deem an inadequate foundation, inadequate framing, sagging roof, Boeing, uh, wall as indicative of it being an unsafe building. And if you accept that, then in your final written order, I'll include those statements, if that's the consensus of the council.
Works for me.
The only other thing I might add is that when we get the permit applied and issued, the timeframe should probably be contingent on what the structural engineer recommends, rather than just a flat 60 days, because I've had the concerns about how long it would take, and I have to agree with Ivan on that. It could be just a two-week fix, it could be longer. But if we could leave that up to the structural engineer on timeframe and these guys over here?
Well, I'm not real keen on the 60 days for a couple of reasons. One, we have no idea, like you said, on what this engineer is going to require Mr. Butler to do. And from just a little bit of construction I've been involved in, if he has to have a foundation put in, he's not going to call just anybody, and they're going to be there tomorrow. These guys are booked up. You know, a lot of these concrete guys are a month out, if you're lucky. So I really find it difficult to put a 60-day guideline that he has to have everything done, because we don't really know how much everything is. You know, I think he needs to get that permit in place, and he needs to get started, but I don't want to suffocate him with a timeline that he's got to get it done when it may not be his fault that he can't get a contractor there to do something. You know, it isn't fair to him in that point.
Agreed.
So the 60 days, I have a little-
I have no problem with changing it to whatever you'd like. My only objective is to ensure that something would happen within X period of time to, so that it was no longer dangerous. That's all. You know, if you want to make it 90 days or 120 days-
Can I, can I s-
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. When I spoke with the town manager the other day, he pointed out an interest in, and I hope it's okay if I say, he, the location of that house being, like, if it was set back off the property, if it was on a back road or something like that, because, you know, I can assure you, that's not the only structure in the town of Hamden that has a sagging wall. And the securing of the structure is the six-foot fence, as the code guy had mentioned, is the removal of the chimney. So, you know, the property's secured that way. At some point, you know, the homeowner, I mean, I've secured the property by putting a six-foot fence around the property, I've put up signs, and I've also taken the chimney down. You know, there's, that, as far as the structure's been secured. You know, initially, initially when I was in here two weeks ago, when I asked for some continuance, I felt that you wanted the structure secured, so I diligently went out, removed the concrete, put cribbin in underneath it, got it ready to jack up. Then the code guy, he pointed out to me, that, I said, "Listen, I'm getting this structure secured." He pointed it out to me, it was his opinion, that the securing of the structure was not in the physical aspect of jacking the structure up, it was in securing the structure with a fence around it for safety for the community, like, if, you know, if the foundation was pushed in, somebody couldn't walk in there. So we're kind of talking about two different things. While I was under the impression that securing the structure would be obviously securing it so it's not going to fall into the basement, that's what I left here understanding, and then the code guy, the first Monday morning, I think he drives right up, because he got a call, "Oh, somebody's working on that." Yeah, I'm securing my property, as anyone would. And his, Miles' interpretation, he took me in a different direction, and he said that securing the structure wasn't, you know, he meant securing what? You can, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but he explained that to me. He said that the town council was talking about putting a fence around the property and taking the chimney down, not about the actual structure. So I just, you know, I'm not looking to have you deem my property as an unsafe structure. I'm not looking to be, you know, I'm not. At some point, I'm the property owner, and I have secured the property by putting a fence around it. And I think, as I spoke to the town manager the other day, he indicated a similar scenario, but this gentleman here, he clearly pointed out to me, you know, securing the structure is exactly what I did. So the structure is secured by the fence, by the signs, by the chimney being down, and it's also secured by the cribbin. But it's, you know, nevertheless, I don't want my structure deemed, you know, an unsafe structure. Absolutely not.
No. Jason?
At the end of the day, we're all here. We initiated this process, as it was called in, as a property of concern. This hearing is a dangerous building hearing. We're not talking about what, I think it's getting confused as to the effort that was put in to secure the property, as to, so that the public couldn't get hurt. At the end of the day, the building is unsafe. We had the attorney at the most simple form read the statute. It met every single piece of criteria in there, whether the fence was up around it or not. That's where we're at.
Thank you. Counsel Marvel?
I'm far from expert in Robert's Rules of Order, but I was going to try to offer a friendly amendment to the motion in front of us to support the finding of being a dangerous building as to the reports from code enforcement and information and observations to include missing or damaged foundation, the tilt of the front wall towards the east side, the skewed roof line, and the skewed windows. And then I was also going to try to hammer out a thought about the timeframe, with it being compliance according to the structural engineer's recommendations to a go with the permit to be completed within 60 days or such later date as agreed to by the town and the contractor. In other words, some way to say, "We're trying to make it 60 days, but if that's not reasonable, if that can't be attainable, we have to define what that's going to mean somehow."
Could I, could I ask?
Go ahead. I'll just-
He's looking for an amendment.
Sorry. He's looking for the maker of the motion to signal whether he would agree with that and whether the person who seconded the motion would agree with those.
I agree with it. I think it'd be, it would probably make more sense to have either the engineer specify a, well, even if an engineer says, "This is what you need to do structurally," I'm guessing, unless that engineer's prepared to do the work himself, he's not going to be, or he or she is not going to be able to say, "It's going to take you X number of days." So I would think that, you know, the code enforcement officer is in a much better position to, you know, take that into consideration, so. But yes, whatever amendment works for everybody, works for me.
So when Mr. Marvel said that the town and the contractor, you would substitute the code officer and Mr. Butler or his contractor-
Correct.
-of the parties to make that, doesn't have to come back to the council. Who was the second on that motion?
Who seconded Perry's motion? I did.
You did?
Yes.
Will you accept your own friendly amendment to that?
I'll second his amendments, if you need that.
Counsel McPike?
I agree with everything, with everything so far, except I, when you start getting the building structurally, you don't really know what's in the walls, et cetera, and the stuff that's going to take place, and there lies my concern. And I'd be much happier if, if the engineer's report came back in 30 days, and in 14 days after that, or I should say, whatever timeframe is necessary, because there may be some items that they may have to come back to Mr. Butler on and say, "We're not quite going to issue it because of this." I've seen that happen. But as soon as the permit is done, is that we then bring this back to council to say, and put a timeframe on it then? Because I just have a feeling that if we lock ourselves in to 30, 60 days after that or 120, that we could be putting a real bind on Mr. Butler to get that done in that timeframe, particularly if he has to get into something structural in the building. I would like to see a timeframe done, but I think it's, I think we're kind of a step ahead right now in doing that.
Counsel Marvel?
I think we're all sensitive to that, truly. And the words aren't perfect, but the intent of the amendment was to address that and to say, 60 days or a timeframe agreed upon by code enforcement, the engineer and the property owner.
Mr. Bala?
Yeah, I'm really opposed to that unsafe structure, and it's not. And is there, would there be the possibility of a structural engineer look at the property and assure you that it's, that it's secure, and then we can, you know, I'm going to get a permit and put a foundation under it, but my point is, is I don't want my building deemed as an unsafe structure when it's not. And I'd like, rather than rely on his observation, I would like to have a structural engineer support my side of that.
Mr. May, may I address this just for a moment?
Yeah.
Mr. Butler, this was a hearing at which, if you had chosen, you could have brought a structural engineer in here to tell the council what you want the council to believe. The words "securing the property" or the words "securing the property" do not appear anywhere in the Dangerous Building statute. It's a pretty straightforward statute. We're talking about the structure itself, and whether the structure itself, regardless of whether there's a fence around it that keeps little kids from crawling into it or not, whether it is unsafe or unstable. Now, it's the council's determination that counts. It's not what you think, it's not what the CEO thinks, it's what the council concludes after hearing the evidence, which it's heard. And I think it's been very generous of the council to continue to accept comments from you and from town staff when they've actually closed the hearing and should be deliberating on this. So the council's going to make a decision, and if you don't like that decision, you can appeal it to the court. Okay?
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Can we have that explained one more time so we're all clear on the latest in the amendment?
I can, I can do my part. And I'll just read what I said before, and then we can add, you know, the motion was that the town council deem the structure at 758 Main Road North a dangerous building pursuant to MRS 17, Section 2851, and to allow Mr. Butler 30 days to apply for the appropriate permit related to stabilizing the building such that it is no longer considered a dangerous building within 60 days of issuance of the permit. And the amendments were briefly that, rather than 60 days, well, 60 days or any length of time, you know, longer than that, according to, you know, the structural engineer and the CEO and Mr. Butler.
The only other thing was the evidence, the windows?
Yes, and I'm quite satisfied that, you know, based upon, you know, the information that I've, you know, seen, the photographs and, you know, the diary that we have here, plus the, you know, the testimony here tonight, I'm satisfied that it's, you know, meets the criteria.
Okay, so you're requiring him to get the permit within 30 days, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'll work with the town clerk and the town manager to draft that decision and have it available for the chair to review and sign tomorrow, but I think that the 30-day period ought to begin now. Your decision has been announced, and it is pretty clear, so, Mr. Butler, you should be aware that it's 30 days from today that your application materials would have to be submitted to the code office.
I would just look for some guidance from the town attorney regarding procedurally, whether this hearing, whether this matter comes back before the council at any point, or whether, if in the future, whether because of timelines or because of lack of performance on behalf of the owner, whether at that point, there, in that hypothetical, whether that would be a newly issued hearing, a newly published hearing with notice, or whether that could come back before the council within the context of what we've already advertised.
I, if I could say, I would like to see, I would like to see updates on every 30 days. So in 30 days, you guys come in front of us and said, "We've received it, we've received the information," and every 30 days, up to the 90 days in total, we get updates so that we can see progress.
Would you like that here at the council, or would you like that at the planning and development committee meeting? Or both?
I'd like to see it at council.
That makes perfect sense to me. I don't think that there needs to be any official action on the part of the council, again, regarding this matter unless something unforeseen occurs. You get absolutely non-compliance or things of that nature. As with any formal decision such as this, there is a 30-day appeal period, which will coincide with you filing the application, in which Mr. Butler, should he feel the need to, could appeal your decision to a court and ask the court to determine whether, based on the same evidence that you've received, whether that was an appropriate finding that you have made. I don't think that the council will need to be involved, other than to be updated from time to time. I don't think there's any further action that would be required if things go awry, as they do from time to time in any construction project. I think it's just an enforcement matter with the code office.
Thank you. Okay, and at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess and then come back. Thank you.
I'm going to take the decision they made and try to put it into this form.
and the subdivision amendments. I'll have Dean Bennett come and explain both of those to us, a referral from planning board.
Good evening. These are very much interlinked, so I'd like to speak to both of them if I could. Back in what I can, I'd have determined to be in the early 90s, the town adopted a section of a subdivision ordinance, 540, entitled Open Space and Recreation Land. The intent, as stated in the ordinance, was to provide open space and recreation land to all areas of the town of Hamden. In order to do that, the ordinance required set-aside land for open space and recreation, or provide cash in lieu of the land, which would then fund an account in which recreation or open space land could be acquired. It was a mandatory requirement, has been since that time. The results of that mandated set-aside has been, in essence, the accumulation of portions of land throughout the town, as to the intent. However, for the purposes of recreation or open space usage, it hasn't worked out that well. What has happened over time is when developers proposed subdivisions, the set-aside land typically was that land that couldn't be sold. So in many cases, the open space land was wetland, or land that is not suitable certainly for recreation. So, and there was a discussion in the community as to, you know, the value of this tract, if you will. In 2014, there was an effort to scale back some of this requirement, and the zoning ordinance was amended to include a provision which would exempt minor subdivisions in the rural areas from this mandatory set-aside when using cluster housing development. In 2016, there was initiative, early this year in January, initiative was set forth to repeal this section 540 out of the subdivision ordinance, the mandatory aspect of set-aside open space land for recreation. And in addition to that, which is the second item, is to repeal the paragraph which was added to the actual zoning ordinance under 4.6 Cluster Housing, which was added of 10/6/2014, which referenced the exemption of the rural district and the four lots, the minor subdivisions. So what's before you tonight that has made the rounds, if you will, started out the Planning and Development Committee, it was put forward to the town council, the town council directed it to the planning board. Planning board then directed it to the Planning Board Ordinance Committee. The Ordinance Committee made positive findings, recommended back to the planning board that this go forward with an art-to-pass recommendation. The planning board did that, and now we come back to you folks, and you establish a public hearing for tonight on these two documents. We have the repeal of the mandatory aspect of open space and recreation land out of the subdivision ordinance, and a repeal of a paragraph on the zoning ordinance which refers back to that subdivision ordinance. I think it's important to note that this is simply removing the mandatory aspect of set-aside open space. Cluster housing is still possible, open space and set-aside of open space subdivisions are still possible in the town of Hamden, but they are a choice with the amendment as proposed, not a mandatory requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
This goes to public hearing?
I think they've already been to public hearing, haven't they? I think this is...
Refer to planning board.
Right, this is when we're going to take a vote tonight.
This is your public hearing.
This is the final vote.
Right.
I'd make a motion that we, how should I word this? Repeal Article 4.6? Zoning ordinance amendments?
It would be a paragraph in 4.6.
Paragraph in 4.6, the paragraph number is?
It isn't referenced, is it?
Okay. And also, I think under section D, section 540 and 554, also be removed?
Correct.
Am I correct in that?
Section 540 through 545.
Just the amendments to those?
Section 540 through 545 is the correct...
540 through 554, or 545?
540 through 554.
Yeah, that's what I have, but he said 545.
I've got 545, provisions of ownership maintenance of open space and recreation areas.
Okay, well, I'll take a...
It'd be a transposition.
Take a time from my motion here, and add that on our thing, we have sections 540 through 554. So I'm trying to figure out whether my motion...
That's an error on the agenda. The materials in the packet are correct.
Okay, so it's 540 through 545. Okay.
Correct.
Second.
That's just as clear as mine now?
That's about the best I can make the motion right now.
Paul, are you clear with that motion?
Uh-huh.
I'm glad she is. Any further discussion?
No, I would simply offer a short version for the public to know that what we're voting on is to amend the zoning ordinance to eliminate the mandatory nature of open space in the appropriate sections in the zoning ordinance, as finally noted.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dean. The next item is under nominations, appointments, and elections, the appointment of election clerks. There's one correction, Lisa Catter on the list is District 4, not District 5. Do I have a motion to accept that list?
I'll make a motion that we accept the appointment of election clerks as listed pursuant to 21-A, subsection 503-2.
With the exception.
With the exception.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item under unfinished business, these items are all going to be referred to public hearing, the sewer ordinance amendment, fees ordinance amendment, and the townways ordinance amendment. Do I have a motion to send those to public hearing?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to send the sewer ordinance amendment for public hearing, the fees ordinance amendment for public hearing, and the townways ordinance amendment for referred to public hearing.
Second. Questions?
They can all be done as one motion?
I don't know why not.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, do you have a question, Council McAvoy?
Just a quick one, I'm sorry. It seems like I remember before that when we were referring something for a public hearing, we just simply said it's referred for a public hearing. I don't recall that we used to vote on them. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'm just saying, we have just simply said we're referring. I just was curious about that.
Put your mic on it, Paula.
I just received some protocols regarding that the other day, and I do think that it states in the protocol that as long as a councilor refers it, it does not need a formal vote.
Okay, so I guess we'll refer. Thank you. Next item up is under new business, the council action on the LY's fishing rights. We have to do this yearly to keep our fishing rights available on the river, although from the information I have, there is no fishing on the Sauk Dabs Cook right now. This just votes so we can keep the rights for future.
I'd make a motion that we keep our rights for LY fishing on the Sauk Dabs Cook.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is Orient Avenue Apartments, snow plowing and storage easement. Dean Bennett?
As Dean approaches the podium, I'm going to pass out an excerpt of the actual plan sheet that shows the location of the proposed easement.
On March 9th, 2016, the planning board reviewed a site plan application for Jeff Rockliff on Orient Avenue for the construction of two buildings, the two buildings to house five one-bedroom apartments. The process for review not only detailed a site plan application which had to be approved, but also a subdivision application, because you're creating five apartment units within a five, yeah, within a five-year period of time constitutes a subdivision. So we get two reviews, site application and subdivision. It was during the site application review and subdivision review that the area down at the end of Orient Avenue, it was noted that historically has been used by the Public Works Department to plow and store snow. It's a very narrow street, and it kind of is a dead end down there. Sean Currie, during our development review team process, our public works director, suggested that provisions be made to secure a continued use of that property at the bottom. The planning board approved the development proposal with a stipulation that we inquire of the manager as to whether an actual snow plowing and storage easement would be required for that area, and a meets and bounds descriptive map, as you have in front of you, would be done. Shortly after that meeting, the applicant, Jim Kaiser, on behalf of Jeff Rockliff, came forward and provided us with a revised MYAR, of which you have a picture of, of the meets and bounds descriptions of that area, and the easement which has been distributed to you, entitled Snow Plowing and Storage Easement of the Area. This effectively has designated an area at the end of Orient Avenue to replace the area that was being used informally with now a formal place for the Public Works Department to utilize in the plowing of snow and storage of snow.
Questions? Council Marvel?
Yeah, I need a simple world translation of all of this. We're talking about a piece of the earth on which we, the town, has historically dumped snow that's been plowed off the road, correct?
Correct.
Who owns that land now?
Rockliff's own property.
Okay. So what we're trying to do is formally hold on to our ability to access that piece of the earth, to continue to dump the snow plowed off the road, and the conditions that I read are that basically we take care of that property in a reasonable means in doing so.
That is correct.
And that's basically what we're talking about here? Okay.
Any other questions? So I think you're looking for a motion to accept that easement, correct?
That would be ideal, yes.
So I move we accept the easement as designated on these plans for the plowing and storage of snow on the Rockliff proposal, the Rockliff subdivision.
Second. Second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. The next item is proposed street opening utility ordinance, is just a referral to public hearing. Someone want to refer that?
I make a motion that we refer for a public hearing, the proposed street opening and utility ordinance.
Thank you. Next item up is the Penobscot Temperature Controls, referral from Finance and Administration, Councilor Saroyes.
In Finance Administration, we discussed the need for payment to Penobscot Temperature Control for the amount of $2,317.27, the result of labor used to fix a boiler that was under warranty, but the labor was not, and our insurance did not cover. So again, the amount's $2,317.27.
Discussion? Have a motion?
Make a motion that we pay the Penobscot Temperature Control for, in the amount of $2,317.27.
Second. Any other discussion? To be noted out of the municipal reserve account?
Municipal reserve account.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item up is the culvert policy, referral from the Infrastructure Committee, Councilor Marvel?
We had a lengthy infrastructure committee meeting a week ago, so I'll do the best with this that I can. And what we're considering here is a policy to better describe responsibilities and maintenance of culverts at the end of driveways, delineating both the property owner's responsibilities and rights, as well as those of the towns, with the intent of protecting public property through the maintenance of effective culverts.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the town adopt the driveway entrance culvert policy as referencing Title 2355-705 MRSA.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Next item up is committee reports. We have Recreation Committee, Council McAvoy. Okay, the next item is request for authorization to transfer funds from the personnel reserve account to reimburse personnel line items.
It was discussed during Finance Administration, the need to transfer funds from the personal reserve account to reimburse the personal line for retirement payouts, thus making both accounts, bring both accounts where they need to be brought to. I make a motion that we go ahead and transfer funds from personal reserve account to the personal line item for FY '16 retirement payouts.
I'll second that motion, but I want to clarify, the funds that were transferred... come from one account, which is a reserve account, basically for retirement and so forth. Instead of paying out on a line item where salaries and benefits and thus making the budget look like we overspent, this eliminates that and it actually improves the transparency of the town.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item up would be the proposed 2016-17 RSU District 22 budget. Town Manager Jennings?
I wanted to make the council and the public aware that the Budget Committee of the RSU 22 School Board held its initial budget hearing last Tuesday, the 29th. Council Marvel and I attended, as did the manager from Newburgh, and they have continued that hearing until April 14th at 6:30 PM. I also plan to attend that night. You have before you the materials that were presented that night, and certainly be happy to talk that over, or, but really, this is an informational item. Those people who are interested in the proposed school budget should be aware that April 14th at 6:30 at the Hamden Academy Library, that hearing will continue. The Budget Committee did state at its meeting that if they do not hear members of the public either supporting or with concerns about the proposal, there's a good chance they would close the hearing that night. So I do want to emphasize the meeting on April 14th is an important one.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
My question is if, I understand by our rules that if three of us show up at that, then we have to publicize it as a meeting?
Okay.
Well, I'm questioning it, because this came up recently in another part of my life, and another city's attorney clarified that to mean if you take the broadest interpretation and you take three town legal counselors, Town Council, meeting for any reason, any place, to have a cup of coffee, that's not doing town's business. That the restriction on this, as I understand it, and our attorneys here can probably define it much better than I can, is that it has to be about matters pertaining to the town. So my question on this is, it's obvious both in terms of the quality of life in this town as well as our budget, that the RSU is a town matter, but do three counselors, three or more counselors attending such a meeting construe unintentionally a separate public meeting that has to be announced?
Without asking you to reveal your source, who gave you that other opinion, which I would agree with, you've asked me a much more difficult question than going to a coffee shop.
I am.
Here's the answer. If three or more of you go to a, in my opinion, if three or more of you go to a school budget meeting, sit together and confer and strategize, then that's probably a meeting at which you shouldn't be doing that sort of thing without having given prior public notice that you're going to be in session. If three or more, or all seven of you go, and you're sitting in disparate places in the audience and not forming a cabal of some kind amongst yourselves, that's not a meeting.
So I have a follow-up question. If I were to look into the camera this evening and let the public know that there's a very good chance three or more of us counselors may well be at the next budget meeting on the 14th of April at 6:30 in the Hamden Academy Library, would that be considered given sufficient notice of a meeting?
I don't know. What do you think, Lady Clerk? I think, no, I don't think so. I think you'd have to give notice to the way you give notice of all of your meetings. But I don't think that, I thought my suggestion was a good one, just don't.
You've always been told that if a notice is given on any meeting, that that process has to be consistent.
It boils down to this, Dennis. If three of us show up, you have to sit alone somewhere.
Any further discussion on that, Council?
Yeah, I wanted to open with a little bit of a joke, but I do want to emphasize what our manager, Angus, just mentioned also. If they don't hear anything in favor or against the budget on this 14th meeting, then they consider it closed. It's really important for the town of Hamden to get involved in all of this stuff, school budget, or what is it, town meetings, or anything else that's going in, going on in the town. It all works together. So yes, write that down on your calendar, April 14th. I don't know about all seven counselors, but I'm pretty sure there's at least going to be three of us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
One point of clarification I would offer on the process that's anticipated on the school budget, what we're referring to tonight is the meeting of the Budget Committee of the School Board, not the Board itself. So it was stated at the meeting last week that the School Board is likely to vote on a proposed budget, whether this one or as may be amended, on either May 4th, May 11th, or May 18th. So what would happen if the School Board's Budget Committee closes its hearing, it would pass it along to the full School Board, which would then have additional meetings.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item, I believe, will be committee reports. Recreation Services Committee, Councilor McAvoy?
I have nothing to report. We haven't met since the last Town Council meeting, but we do have one here in this chamber at 6 o'clock next Monday evening, and I'd like to see you there.
Thank you. Infrastructure, Council Marvel?
Last Monday, the full, well, the council met as the Infrastructure Committee for two hours. The first item was the monitoring of the landfill. It was decided to have a public presentation of the findings, probably this coming August, after there has been sufficient review of the five-year report which is due this month. The Town Manager and Councilor McPike met with representatives at Casella at the landfill site on March 28th, and one of the items discussed was our need to reinstate the Environmental Trust Committee. More on that later. Much of the infrastructure meeting was spent on review and modifications to ordinances having to do with subjects falling under the purview of the Director of Public Works. Many of these were referred tonight. Sean Curia brought drafts covering the sewer ordinance, fees ordinance, and the driveway entrance culvert policy, the townway ordinance, as well as the draft of a new ordinance for street openings and utility connections. We also had a brief discussion about the MDOT 1A project scheduled for 2017 and the sewer line to be located there. We had a presentation from a citizen named Karen Mary's daughter about a program called Solarize Greater Bangor, a model in place in other parts of the country and in several locations in Maine that has the intent of supporting the increased use of solar power for electricity, in part through making it more affordable for families and small businesses. The committee agreed to support this effort in terms of putting information on the town's website, and will be discussing this further at the next Planning and Development Committee meeting, which I think is this coming Wednesday. Finally, the committee continued discussion about the transfer station, and also heard from the Town Manager about the work needed to clarify the financial status of work completed on 1A, which was brought up earlier tonight in the Finance and Administration meeting. The next meeting of the Infrastructure Committee is scheduled for April 25th.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Council McPike?
We have not met since the last council meeting, but we will be meeting Wednesday night at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Councilor Saroyes?
Two of the three, two of the four items that were discussed tonight during Finance and Administration were talked about during the Town Council meeting, one of those being the request for authorization of payment at Penobscot Temperature Control for replacement of the boiler, as well as the transfer of funds from the Personnel Reserve account to reimburse the personnel line item for FY '16 retirement payouts. Two other topics that were discussed was the Town Manager's evaluation, which was presented to him tonight for his review and further discussion, as well as discussions around planning and Economic Development Department reorganization that it went through 12 months ago, and we're going to continue discussing to make sure it meets the needs of the town and its residents.
Thank you. The next item up would be the Managers' Report.
I don't have a written report tonight, but I did just want to update the council and the public. We are hard at work on the proposed FY '17 budget. I sent out the budget worksheets to the department heads in mid-March. I've set a deadline of, I believe, this Thursday to receive proposed budgets. I've received some, I'm working on those. So I, the process is the department heads propose their budget to me. I've made it very clear to all of them, I want to hear what they think they're, what they think they need, but I've also said what I bring forward to the council will not follow necessarily what each department head brings to me. But I would like to hear from them what they feel they need to provide the service they're charged to provide. I will then bring forward a proposed budget to this council later this month, and in May and June, we will have budget hearings. And I'm also working toward Spring Hamden Highlights newsletter, and within the newsletter, we'll set out the dates of different budget hearings by department. My goal is to get that distributed throughout the community so that people who are interested in one or more departments are aware with as much advance notice as we can provide of what date or dates those departments will be considered.
Thank you. Next item up is Councilor Comments. Councilor Saroyes?
No comment.
Councilor McPike?
No comment.
Councilor Wilde?
No comment.
Council Marvel?
At the end of the last council meeting, two weeks ago, Councilor Cormier spoke encouraging the public to come and attend these meetings in person, and prior to that, Mayor Ryder had made similar requests at different times, that had other counselors. I want to echo that tonight. The quality of these meetings and the conversation that can happen and the decisions made are all better affected when there are people in the room, so I would encourage people to attend. And also to follow up, I would absolutely encourage people to attend the process of the RSU, RSU school budget determination, starting with the Budget Committee's meeting on the 14th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Cormier?
No comment.
Council McAvoy?
Comment and a question for Town Manager. Are these going to be separate hearings, or are they going to be in conjunction with the appropriate committees?
You're talking about the budget?
The budget hearings, yes.
I would, well, the hearings will be, dates will be set for one or more departments on specific dates before the council, whether there are also discussions before different committees leading up to that. Is that the question?
Well, I guess, so these hearings are going to take place at a council meeting?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wasn't clear about.
Right, but that doesn't preclude, for example, on Services Committee a week from tonight, you know, certainly part of that discussion could be related to issues that would then come forward in the budget process. But yes, the hearings on the budget would be before the council.
Excellent, thank you. I just want to remind people to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. I guess in my closing statement, I'd like to touch on the Town Manager's evaluation a little bit. It was a six-months evaluation. It was a general consensus from everybody on the council, we're very pleased with Angus Jennings as the new Town Manager. We all feel very lucky and happy that he's on board with us. He's been doing an excellent job so far, and we're really pleased. I think he's looking out for the best interest for everybody in this town, and we're extremely happy and lucky to have him. And with that note, do I have a motion for an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, good night.